Yeah, we get six.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 13th, regular meeting of the Board of Education. We have Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Zahn, I'm John Matola. Mrs. Iaccone will be here. Mrs. Albin will be here momentarily. Mr. Carey's here. Mr. Fattabean, Ms. TeShara. And Mr. Lou will not be here tonight. He had a prior commitment. So, why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, our first item, item three, actually, our third item, excuse me. Approval of Minutes Recommended Motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2011. Mrs. Brand, seconded by Mrs. Dow. This is, any discussion on this? Seeing none, greater vote. All in favor? Unanimous? I'm sorry. And one abstention, Mrs. Zahn. Okay, we're on item four, Student Committee Liaison Reports. We have the, Stephanie, you're Ward, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we don't have one, anyone from Ludlow yet. Are we gonna get one, or at some point? Okay. Fairfield Ward High School Student Liaison, Stephanie TeShara, welcome again.
Thank you. So, the ninth graders started a week and a half ago with their orientation, and we had a numerous amount of students helping out as student advisors. And afterwards, there was the cookout served by the teachers and the faculty. Fall sports started today, and cross-country actually just had a meet. Field hockey and soccer have their first games tomorrow, and football has their first big game on Friday. A group of girls from the fashion program went to California over the summer for, to compete in nationals for FCCLA, and all of the girls left with an award of either silver or gold. And on Friday, we had a great assembly for 9/11, where music students worked extremely hard and did a terrific job, especially the chorus, because the teacher just started three days ago, three days before it. So, they all learned in a short period of time. And Mr. O'Brien gave a speech about the history of 9/11, and his personal reflection, and a student, Brianna Pintoro, wrote a poem, which, so, it's all been really good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Albin isn't here, but when she gets here, I'm gonna go back to her. She's at a Board of Directors meeting for CAE, and apparently, the new commissioner spoke, so she wanted to say a few things about that. So, we'll get to her. Mrs. Brand, any report tonight?
Yeah, several. With SES, they had their last meeting this past Thursday. They had three construction projects. All three of them are actually under budget. They are working on their long-range capital plan. It's very reasonable. But there was a very interesting piece, which I actually saw Dr. Title the day after. The state curriculum standards are changing, and they are talking about that and are providing information. These changes are supposed to be implemented by 2014. And it is a different way of teaching, in the instruction. So, there are gonna be new standards and new assessments. It's actually, it looks like an enormous undertaking. They will be providing workshops for that. And on October 19th, they are offering all districts a technical help with their technology long-term plan, which apparently also has to be finished by 2012. The result from the state for schools, about yearly progress status, has been held up because there were some errors and corrections that needed to be done. So, if you have received it, Dr. Title may have received ours, but he's actually not allowed to even give it to us yet. Six to six. Their program has, for the last five years, had improved test scores. And I think that's it for SES. Then Board of Health had a meeting last night. They reviewed, basically, the outcome they had from the management of the storm with the shelter at Ludlow, and it ran extremely well. Was, they had more than enough volunteers, and people were very nice. They had, at one point in time, 70 people there. They also, and I did raise it, raise it because some people mentioned it to me, many of you may have gotten phone calls and updates, you know, on Saturday, giving us a heads-up. The only issue some folks may have is if they don't have their landline. I call it a landline for, back a better term. People rely on their cellphones, don't necessarily have a transistor radio, so communication, I think, in this day and age is becoming a much more of a challenge than it was before. So, they are, you know, looking at that to see how they can do that better. Nursing policies, independent of what our board policies, they had some changes as well. They do not impact what we're doing. In fact, if anything, they just mirror better what we are doing, and they are fully aware, because one of the policies was a change in suicide, and all the nurses have ours and are fully aware of it. For curriculum, Subcommittee, you have it in your packet. We can, actually, would be, we'll address it later, because quite frankly, it's an enormous undertaking as well. It's very detailed. We also are talking about school improvement and the school climate, which, again, will be incorporated as part of the bullying policy, and that's gonna be due in December. There is a committee that's gonna be looking into that, and I had a thought that, of course, I didn't think of last Wednesday, and I just wanted to see whether or not Board members would be interested in this. Because we're looking at school climate, and part of it is to have, basically, a student to walk in the building and feel comfortable, so that they don't have to think they're gonna be bullied, they don't have to be worried about anything. It should be a safe environment. And to that end, some of the issues have been clearly about bullying. But the focus is, is to shift, so that we're moving away from just telling students what not to do, as to how to foster something that really makes a child feel better and comfortable in the environment. Because, quite frankly, I don't know about you, but when kids aren't, I don't learn well if I'm worried. I'm just, there's not gonna happen. And I don't think kids do either. So, one of the things I'd like to see, because, is because of some of the issues, is perhaps invite religious leaders, local religious leaders, to help give us some feedback and help participate in that, if that would be possible, unless Board members have. Because there have been some issues with sexual orientation and some misunderstandings, and I felt that that would help facilitate this, so it would be very clear. Also, you have in your packet and receive the cycle of curriculum review. Are my, is everyone following me in what I'm talking about, religious leaders and what I'm talking about? Okay.
I think our public school system.
Well, I think that's my point. Some of the comments that were brought up in the Diversity Task Force were related to some people's misjudgment in expressing their beliefs. So, what I'm trying to do is make sure that when people do that, they understand that their religious beliefs are just that. They're not to be imposed on somebody else. And there is a distinction. So, in fact, there are some articles that I brought, that I'll bring up later on, that I think will be helpful, that were in the New York Times. But that was why, I think, if we have those people involved, I think that would help. Going back to the curriculum piece, we do have, again, the changes, the cycle of curriculum. My only concern, as I said before, was after going to the SES meeting, if the state changes will have an impact, and if so, what those changes would look like for our curriculum cycle. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand. Mrs. Dowdy, have anything tonight?
No. Mine's short. Finance meeting, well, Subcommittee will actually meet next Monday on September 19th at 5:30. SEPTA has their first meeting of the year tomorrow evening, and nothing on CAE.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabean?
Yeah, there appears to have been a flurry of referrals to the Transportation Safety Committee, which is understandable, I guess.
I gotta say something for the, you're excellent at that. Your analysis is tremendous. That's a plug.
Thank you very much.
It really is.
I was gonna say, I like to take my job seriously, and I actually.
I wanna echo Mr. Matola. I said it before, if you guys could read Mr. Fattabean's reports, they really are extremely detailed. They're excellent.
Thank you. I actually walk every request and see, take a look at it and make some determinations. I try and certainly follow Board policy. And I'd like to say, in sort of the Transportation Department actually does a good job in implementing Board policy. So, in most instances, you don't find a deviation in Board policy, and for that reason, in a lot of cases, requests may not be granted. But I find the issue maybe that the parents don't really understand the Board policy, or really have different emotional and issues which are, which are, you know, are understandable. But yet, we as a district have to comply with the Board policy, as well as be fair to all the children of the districts, and make sure that they all, that the policies apply fairly to everyone. And that's one of my primary goals, and I try and accomplish that. And that's, so, we've so far resolved, or at least had drafted opinions or made recommendations as to how to, we're gonna, how to hold, or what the decision would be, in most of all the cases now. I don't see, I don't know of any outstanding pending one that has not been decided yet. So, for now, we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Okay, so, next would be Mrs. Iaccone.
The special standings, Special Project Standing Building Committee continues to be focused on the Sherman project. We went before the Board of Selectmen and did receive full funding at that table for an additional appropriation that would total $3.9 million, and that included ventilation for the gymnasium and the APR, and an energy recovery system. We then went before the Board of Finance, and our request was reduced to an even appropriation of $3 million. And with that money, we will be able to, if the RTM funds it, do the classroom ventilation, the administrative wing work, and the second serving line in the kitchen. But we will not be able to do the gymnasium ventilation or the APR ventilation. I sent a whole new report to everybody today outlining what's going before the RTM. And they start their committing, meetings next week, the 19th and the 21st, and then that goes before the full RTM on September 26th. We did make it very clear and went on record that the Board of Education took a sense of the body, and Dr. Title also spoke, and said that it was our intention to see the project through to completion, meaning that we would be back to ask for ventilation in the gymnasium and the APR. When that will happen, you know, we don't know, but we weren't gonna let it drop, or be, let Sherman be done, so to say. And the way that the project is structured now, we wouldn't be able to do gym ventilation and APR ventilation until one year after the CEO is, is granted for the work we're doing now, because we're, because it falls under the FEMA limitations. So, that's where we are. So, hopefully, the RTM will be on board and will grant us the additional $800,000 so that we can get this much-needed classrooms, the ventilation, and the second serving line at Sherman. And that's pretty much everything I have.
Mr. Carey?
Mrs. Chair, Mrs. Iaccone, and/or possibly Administration, would it be possible for us to invite the RTM to hold their meeting in the Sherman Gymnasium on September 26th, as opposed to the Osborne Hill APR? So, they can get a feel for what that room feels like when there's people in it?
I could certainly ask the moderator if you'd be interested in holding the meeting at Sherman School. If the Board is so inclined, I'd be happy to ask him that.
It's not lost on this Board member that quite often, at least a handful of recognizable faces on the RTM wave their arms about ventilation and air conditioning, yet I see them in this room in the summer when it's hot, and not in our elementary school. So, I think it might be beneficial, having been in that gymnasium several times for tours with Mr. Cullen, especially in September when it's warm, it can be very punishing. It might be beneficial for our RTM members to understand what the children are going through when they're in gym.
Well, if I see nods of the head from the Board, I would be happy to ask the moderator if that's possible. I know the call goes out tomorrow, so I'm not sure that we're going to be able to make that deadline.
I'd just make a comment on that. Having been on the RTM for a number of years, I think the RTM appreciates the needs of the school. And the question is, the ability for the town to fund the needs of the school completely. I think a request like that may be interpreted negatively, and maybe not be received well with the RTM, which may be more alienating than embracing. So, that's my caution, is it my, I think that they would feel that they don't, it's an accusation that they don't fully appreciate the needs of the school, when I do think they do. If they've been, certainly, brought to them well enough, they know the needs. The question is, can they fund the needs? So, in other words, I'd be cautious making requests like that, whether that serves a, would be a good thing or a bad thing.
Mrs. Brand, I saw your hand, and Mrs. Zahn?
Yeah, because a lot of those spaces also get booked in the evening, and you have a short time turnaround on this. Perhaps instead, we could offer and say, listen, if you wanna see what it looks like, again, we don't wanna be disruptive, but when kids are scheduled in the gym, and invite and just someone to stand by the door, you get the wave of heat, you know it's there. And that's an invitation to see what it's like and what we're trying to fix, and I think that is a combination of both. It's respectful, but it also is informative.
Mrs. Zahn, do you have something?
Yes, thank you. Also, having spent four years on the RTM, there are some people that can't get there. I think this is an opportunity, since you have to attend your meeting, to be there and be able, so I don't look at it as a negative scheduling the meeting at Sherman. I think that gives everybody on the RTM an opportunity to be in that building, in that APR room. So, I would go ahead with that.
Anybody else? Okay, well, it's really not up to us anyway, so.
It isn't. I mean, but I don't know if you guys want me to ask or not. I have to.
Doesn't hurt, but. All right. So, we all done with this? Mrs. Iaccone, do you have it?
I just, do you want me to go back and ask? Can you nod, can you nod your head or something?
You wanna do a sense of the body on that?
That would be helpful, just to me, just so, I just wanna make sure I'm doing the right thing by you guys. Okay, so, Mrs. Brand does not want us to.
That's one thing I really don't feel strongly either way.
Yeah.
Sorry. No, it's just something I don't feel strongly either way, so I'll go with the majority on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd ask 'em.
Okay. Mr. Carey obviously wants us to. Mr. Fattabean made us, yeah, all right. I'll ask. I'll be honest with you. I think, I know the call goes out tomorrow, so I think we missed the window, but I'll offer it up as a, as a suggestion and see how they take it.
Mrs. Brand?
In lieu of that, if Dr. Title doesn't think it would be too disruptive, can we make the offer, since you will be going, to see if they wanna visit the site? I don't wanna, you know, cause you more problems.
Oh, we can offer to have them come visit the site. We've done that before.
Multiple times.
It is often difficult to coordinate that, and a lot of times, a lot of them don't come, for various reasons, timing, and so on and so forth. But they're always welcome to visit during the day with notice. We're here, we have staff there, so we welcome that. So, if, in lieu of that, we could offer, if anybody would like to come to the school with some notice, let us know, we'll be happy to accommodate them.
Okay, I will extend.
In case they don't go with the other, I mean, to be honest with you, the way the thing stands right now, the ventilation issue of the APR and the gym couldn't happen for two more years, and so, you know, if we don't get the activity right now, when we come back, maybe that's the time. I'm not sure that's even gonna be a discussion point for the RTM, because it was not approved by Board Finance.
That is correct. And my revised documents do not have that there.
Right. So, but we're, you know, always happy to have the governing bodies visit and see that live. Not always persuasive, by the way.
I will, I will extend the invitation and let them know that that's a possibility for them if they so choose, and if that's not available, that we will accommodate anyone with notice who would like to come to Sherman School.
Sure. Mr. Fattabean?
I certainly agree with the, with the, to invite the RTM to these, to the site and to visit the site. I definitely agree with that. It's a good thing to do, they should do that, and I would encourage RTM members to do that. And when I was on the RTM, I did that. Just, the only question I have is whether you request another body to change their meeting time and date to make a point. I think that's, that's the issue I have, that I don't think that's, I think that's been more detrimental than productive.
I won't offer it as a point. I'll offer it as a, you're welcome to, we're happy to host here, if you so choose.
There you go. Okay. Mr. Carey, you have anything?
PTA Council had their Leadership Kickoff Meeting last night. It was a great event, a lot of new faces in PTA leadership. They do this once a year. I learned that this is something that Fairfield's a leader in, in terms of this Leadership Kickoff Meeting. And PTA obviously is an essential part of our system here, in terms of supporting our efforts, and our parents go to great lengths to learn Robert's Rules and our budget process, and they started that process last night with all kinds of tutorials and classes after the kickoff meeting. And Mr. Matola and Mrs. Iaccone spoke as long, as well as Dr. Title, so it was a great event.
Thank you. Mr. Lou is not here. Dr. Todd, did you wanna say anything about Fairfield Woods? I don't, it's going.
It's open.
It's open.
It's, it's really nice. It's a very nice facility. Think that if you haven't had a chance to get a walk around, please do so. It really turned out fantastic, and I have to say that the staff did a terrific job last spring through the summer, along with our maintenance staff, of getting the building ready for kids. I mean, I was in there a few days before school started, and then the first day of school, and it looked like a transformation had happened. It was incredible, and that's a total team effort to make that happen. And it was touch and go. You know, the, the fire system basically blew out the day before the hurricane, which caused a lot of problems. And I'll also say that the town, Fire Department, Building Department, and so forth, were extraordinarily helpful, putting time in to continually do inspections with our contractor, with our staff, to get that school open. But from an architectural, from a flow, from a air quality, all these standpoints, I think it's really something to be proud of, and I think that when the auditorium is finished and, you know, the project is really complete, it's gonna be top, top-notch.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand?
I actually had the opportunity and did go through a walkthrough, and what hits you right away is it's so much brighter. It's, it's, it really is a tremendous improvement, and if you do get the opportunity, I hope you do, because it's a wonderful change, not just for the space, but also the kind of space. I was impressed.
My turn. I, the only thing I would say is for Stratfield, the school is essentially done. I guess there's some punch list items. I walked around the building the Friday before school was supposed to open. It's very nice also. And I, many of you have been over there, but since they've done the other part of the project, maybe you haven't been over there, you should go take a look. It's very nice, and it still has kept its integrity with respect to its look. It's, it's beautiful. Mrs. Zahn, do you have anything?
No. High School Scholarship Foundation meets tomorrow.
Okay. Now, we'll go back to Mrs. Albin. How are you?
Fine. Thank you. I just returned from the Board Directors Meeting at CAE, where we waited a long time for the new Commissioner to arrive. He was, I think, an hour late, and actually, I was driving to this meeting, and he was driving in the parking lot, and I said, okay, I have to go back. Anyway, we did meet him. Prior to that, the Acting Commissioner, George Coleman, was honored by CAE. He will be retiring. And, and he kept us entertained for the hour that we waited, talking about much of what will be going on in the state in education in the next year. And I have, you know, notes here. I'm happy to share them with people. He did believe that this is going to be a pivotal year in movement forward in the state in education, one of the key areas in working to close the achievement gap. And, and that, you know, schools here in Connecticut and elsewhere, but especially Connecticut, need to start meeting the needs of students in the 21st century, which are altogether very different from the prior century, is one of his quotes. And in meeting Stephen Pryor, who is the new Commissioner, he came and didn't take too much of our time, and was briefly running through his background. He started out, his parents are, some people have read information in the papers, but some of this is not covered by them. And he started out with a mother and a father who are teachers, who, he said, he learned lesson plans every night at the dinner table. He himself has had a career in teaching, and at a point, crossed to the position he's leaving in community development. So, because there are the questions that people have, what is his background, and how does he suit this role? And so, he was answering those, those questions. And one of the key things they did note is that we will be doing Race to the Top Three this year, and they intend on winning.
That's my department.
So, any, I can share, you know, more if people wanna know. I have notes here.
Okay. I'll talk about that a little. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we are on item five, Superintendent's Report, A, Opening of School Update. Dr. Title?
Okay, thank you. Actually, I asked for a few extra minutes on this, 'cause we have a lot going on. I just wanna piggyback on what Mrs. Albin said. I think I put in your folder that the, the Race to the Top is the early learning challenge Race to the Top. And since I was recently elevated from committee member to Chair of the Governor's Early Childhood Cabinet, it's our cabinet that's actually gonna be driving that, and would actually end up overseeing the money if the state were to get it. So, I went from this bureaucratic committee that was basically treading water, doing nothing, to potentially sitting on $50 million. Those, a little bit like the Beverly Hillbillies, you know? So, but the session last week at the Capitol to push this, I mean, everybody's rallying behind this. No one's like taking shots. The first two Race to the Tops was a lot about finger pointing, and whose fault it would be if we didn't get it. Everyone's trying to coalesce around this, including the Governor, who's a huge early childhood advocate, which is the reason I took the position that I did. So, that's potentially exciting at the state, and I think we're gonna make it broad enough so that Fairfield would be able to participate in this. This is not just about urban Race to the Top. This is for everybody. Okay. Where do I start? First of all, we opened. That was, thank you. Yes, everybody was happy about that, especially the parents, especially me and my wife, in particular. It was very touch and go. This is certainly the most unusual opening I've been in in my 33 years of doing this. I will say that I was heavily involved with the, along with Mr. Cullen and Mr. Mirabito, with the police, the fire, the public works, the First Selectmen, United Illuminating, sitting in like the war room, looking at maps of where the adages were and the trees that were down. I'll say the, I'm not sure how well- conveyed it was. The damage to the, to this town was extensive, and ripped out large portions of the electrical grid, particularly up in the Burr area, Dwight area. And, and we did put out a lot of communication about this, but as it moved along, it became very dicey. And, and I will have to give one shout-out to Sal Mirabito, who tracked down a generator in New Jersey, and had it brought up here and hooked up in time for the staff to get into Mill Hill about noon on Friday before we opened. Had we not been able to do that, I don't think we would've opened, because nobody would've been in the building for a week, and you just can't just turn the lights on and open school. It's not fair to kids. So, we took a risk, and the staff really came through, our maintenance staff, the town staff, everybody worked together on that. So, thankfully, we're open, and we really only lost two student days in many districts around us. We had a roundtable about this with local superintendents, you know, many districts lost four days, five days. So, we basically have had two snow days. That's how you gotta think about it. So, we have four in the calendar before we go to April. We've used two. That's the simplest way to put it. The, I did give you a first-day enrollment count in, in the packet, and that had some interesting notes to it. Again, one caution is enrollment moves around between the first day and the official October 1. My experience is it tends to go up, but you never know. At this point, we are 57 children higher than we projected. At this point, we are 57 children higher than we projected. And we projected an increase. So, we are looking at more kids than we thought. The biggest difference is, and this is so interesting, because we had this big discussion about birth rates and kindergarten based on birth rates versus kindergarten based on other ways, and back and forth, the biggest difference, what accounts for the vast majority of the enrollment change, is the kindergarten numbers. We have 800 kindergartners, we projected 760. The rest of it is kind of a wash, I mean, there's some increase there, but, you know, cohort survival's pretty good on the, you know, our kids, we pretty much know. So we're only about 17 off there, but we had to add some kindergarten sections. So it was quite oppression of the board to add elementary teaching positions last year during the budget cut. If you remember, we cut a bunch of positions, but we said, our enrollment looks like it's climbing, we need to add three positions, and we needed them all. So that worked out very well. The three schools with the largest kindergarten enrollment over projected were Holland Hill, Jennings, and Sherman.
Wow.
Sherman. It's always about Sherman. And those, they had more than 10 children beyond the projection. All the other ones were pretty close. Ones that were down, were down by less than 10 children. So, I mean, that's sort of the biggest thing there. We ended up then essentially, at the end of the day, right now, as it stands, 21 more kids in K to 5 than we projected, six more kids in the middle school than we projected, and 30 more at the high school. That was a little bit of a surprise. So, again, this still has to sort itself out, but that's where we are on enrollment. So, the kids keep on coming. So, that's enrollment. On the certified staff front, we are pleased to report, due to the diligent efforts of Margaret Mary Fitzgerald and others, that we started the full year fully staffed, with all of our certified positions filled by qualified professionals. We ended up with 25 retirees, a substantial amount of retirees post June 1st. It's not exactly 25 FTEs, it's never that simple, but there's 25 people. If you remember, even as we got to the budget in the middle of May, we were looking at maybe 13. So, as a result of that, you might remember in the budget, in terms of the budget reductions, we actually eliminated 16, approximately 16 certified positions in the budget. Because of the attrition, we were able to affect the reductions, those 16.4 reductions, without laying off any teachers, including all the world language teachers, that we thought, there was like no way we'd find a slot for them. But a couple of people had positions reduced by fractions, but no certified people actually were laid off, because we had greater than average retirements and other reasons. Now, some of the world language teachers held certification in something different. It's not like they're in a world language spot, but they're certified and qualified for the position we put them in. So that worked out well, because at some point, you know, we may need those folks to go back and teach world language, and it's good to have them in the system. On the non-certified side, there were similar number of reductions, but we were not quite as fortunate in the layoff department. We did manage to place, we eliminated approximately 14 paraprofessional positions throughout the district. But that's a group that traditionally has a significant amount of turnover, and we were fairly confident that would be absorbed, they would be absorbed into the bloodstream, and they were. So no paraprofessionals were laid off. The two places where we did have layoffs were secretaries, we eliminated three positions, two people were laid off. They're on a recall list, so if a job opens up, they'll be brought back, and media technicians. We eliminated five, and four of those people we don't have jobs for. So that's kind of where we stand with that on the certified side. So, we did eliminate, you know, we did a bunch of position eliminations on your cut list, those positions were eliminated. It's not like we suddenly added positions in, for whatever reason. Right now, our FTE count's going to be pretty much right, you know, within one or two, right on the number that we budgeted. So we're right there with what we said we were going to need. I said, because we added those elementary positions, we're able to absorb the extra kids, which is really what helped us there. We are going ahead with, or we did go ahead with, the budget reductions as you, as they were outlined last year. For some people, they're just feeling it like on the first day of school, when somebody bumped over me at the Rotary meeting and said, what's this $100 parking fee? So, you know, we are putting that into effect. We are having to cut back on the hours of the libraries at the high schools after school. We have secretaries rotating into positions at the high schools. We did affect the world language reduction that we all had tremendous consternation about. We did increase the lunch prices. I mean, basically, we did what we said would happen when we cut the budget. We didn't mysteriously find money, and the stuff that was on your list of cuts, this stuff's happening. I guess that's the bottom line. I don't go through the gory detail, because I'm supposed to be upbeat at the beginning of the year. And I am, because it's going to be a great year. We are still sorting out some busing issues, as Paul mentioned, beginning of the year is when you have busing concerns. We are actually, our biggest sort of traffic issue at this point has been at Tomlinson, not so much because of the extra buses that we have there, but because of the way the traffic flows in that school with the buses and the car traffic essentially using the same lane. And it's always been a problem, but now it's more of a problem. And we're really working on that issue. We do have, from Bill Hurley, the town engineer, I think he's the town engineer, designed a fix for that, that would involve some renovation and repair work to the lower parking lot, the parking lot closest to the train station. We don't believe it's a tremendously expensive fix, and it would remove the car traffic entirely from the bus area. The problem is, I mean, the cost is one issue, but the bigger issue there is, it's going to need significant number of approvals from town bodies to make it happen. Not so much for the money, but, you know, we're taking, we need to take out a tree, we need to remove a couple of parking places and relocate them, you know, there's just all these conservation, and there's a bunch of different approvals. So, we'd like to move it along, we're going to move it along, but in the meantime, we just ask for people's patience on that, and the more Tomlinson parents can let the kids take the bus instead of driving, it will help solve it. But we did manage an extra loop for the buses in the top, top of Tomlinson, for lack of a better word. We did remove some parking places, including the principal's parking place, and created an extra loop up there, so the extra three buses can actually flow through. So really, the buses, for, you know, the buses aren't really the issue, it's the, all the other traffic, which is not surprising. So that's, we're looking for a more permanent fix on that. So I just, full disclosure, not everything is as smooth as we'd like it to be.
Got a question, Mrs. Brand on that?
Actually, the kind of bus parent drop off that you're talking about was actually part of the project and the plan originally, and they ran out of money. And I think even the bus loop, we tried to get the increase in size, and we're doubling up in lanes for the very same reason. I think it was supposed to accommodate 11 buses. And I honestly don't think there has been a time ever since that time that we actually had 11. We always had 13, and I think now, or what are we up to, 18 or 19? Yeah.
18.
So it's always been a challenge. The other thing I wanted to ask you was, is there, there are fewer students though there now than there were last year, right? I thought we went down to 756, and I thought we were 780.
Not by much. It's very close.
Okay.
It's within 10 or 12 students.
Okay.
Yeah. We are, just in terms of total buses running in the system, remember, we had estimated, because it's an estimate, estimated we would need a certain number of extra buses for the grandfathering, and we would save a certain number of buses for the high school start times. We had run 95 public school buses last year. We had estimated that we would need to fund 91 public school buses this year, you know, a plus on the grandfathering and a minus on the high school. And guess what? We are running 91 buses. It is right on the number, and we are running more runs, obviously, because of the grandfathering. So we are running 13 more runs with four fewer buses. And the reason we're doing that is that we are running more of the buses three loops, three tiers, as we say, which was the whole idea of this thing, right? So I'm happy to report, it's actually happening. As an example, last year, we ran, only five public school buses ran three loops.
Okay.
This year is 23.
Wow.
So that's, you know, where the action is, right? Because the marginal cost of the second and third run is very small. So, this has worked out just about the way it was designed. I mean, we may be running an extra bus at a middle school, but we saved another one, because, see, the middle school buses that were running for grandfathering can also pick up other loops, they don't have to just do the grandfathering and go back in the barn. So, in some ways, that's a cost offset. So, the net effect of the whole thing is, we are right on the number in terms of our budget, the number of buses, which, you know, I have to give John Vicki credit for trying to figure this stuff out, because I don't know how he does it, because you've got to layer in all the private schools with it, and, you know, you start talking to them and you just glaze over, it's just incredible. That's why he's got an MBA, you know. You need a PhD in busology to do this. But anyway, it's, you know, we're where we need to be with that, and I'm proud to report that we're within the budget on that.
You have a question on that, Mrs. Albin? Go ahead.
Dr. Title, would it help with Tomlinson if you were to write a letter to the parents of Tomlinson students explaining the traffic issue, and perhaps asking them to use the buses, and if it was signed by you and the chairman of the board, since I personally would endorse that kind of a letter going home to families? It'd make everyone's life better, and probably things would work better on site and probably more safely.
Well, we did, a letter similar to the one that you suggested went home from the principal, I think that did help. I'll see whether, if she thinks that another letter coming from central office would help, then I'd be happy to do that, anything to help the situation. But I think the message was clearly communicated by the principal, whom the parents know and respect, I think would probably, you know, help it. But we're working on it, it's a work in progress. You know, a lot of these things, it's like with the bus stop issue, I mean, it works in progress. The new round of buses, the routes are different, and we're adjusting. Yep. All right.
More question, Mrs. Brand?
If we know what group of people, if there's any way to find out who's driving their kids and what buses are emptier, that might help point to what the issue is, and then help us address it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're still, it's, we're still working on it. We know there's an issue, and we're working on it. I do want to say, we have a number of initiatives this year in 11-12. While the board, I think, accomplished a lot last year, got a lot off the plate, people should know, we're not just sort of hanging back this year and sort of just presiding over the system. We're looking to make some major improvements in our technology. I think Mrs. Brand referenced the technology plan. Our technology plan will need to be updated, Mrs. Parks is going to be leading the charge on that, and I think she's actually going to that meeting at CES that she talked about. So, we are going to be looking at putting out an RFP and trying to get funding for a student information system. That was something that was in the audit, something that's badly needed. It's a complex method. We are also changing our entire help desk system with fewer media techs, and so there's a lot of technology going on. We're going to continue to implement the facilities plan as designed, as long as the funding stays for it. You know, many of our initiatives from last year, we now need to implement them, the new elementary staffing model, and people are very excited about that, I think we've got some great people in place to make that happen. Now we need to make it work and evaluate it. Our new model of gifted education's going into play this year at the elementary and the middle school, our new preschool model at Ward and Burr, more common assessments at the high school, the grading guidelines, the academic expectations. You remember of last year, near the end of the year, you heard a lot about the plans for that, and more is going there. Our student intervention services called SRBI, we're continually refining that, that needs, and of course, the elementary staffing model will really help with that. But that needs continuous updating, and needs, and we'll be having a behavioral component added to it, which layers into the whole school climate legislation, and what you talked about, Mrs. Brand, about a lot of the requirements in the legislation will require some committees that will be broad based, so I suspect in the process of meeting all the legislative requirements, we're going to be bringing community leaders to help us put some plans together for climate. I'm happy to report that Andrea Leonardi's got the lead on that for us. And we know she did such a great job with the suicide policy, that we decided to give her more to do. No good deed goes unpunished. So we are working on that, student behavior, student assistance teams. You referenced the new curriculum coordinating council that Dr. Rosado is spearheading, and we're looking at the whole curriculum, review of curriculum, how curriculum is done, how it's led, we're looking at all of that. Lots of work with the administrators on putting together a common format for school improvement plans that are based on data and a common template, using our best practices with schoolwide data teams, with data teams at the department levels, and a lot of looking in the classrooms, visiting each other's schools, really looking at what's going on in the classroom as a vehicle for change. A lot of professional development going on with the administrative team, and we'll be involving teachers in that as well. The elementary report card is on the docket for revision this year. Curriculum development, you're going to be seeing approval for elementary art, elementary music, math in grades three to five, pre-K to five language arts, and grade seven to 12 technology education. So all of that is queuing up for future meetings. I think it'll mostly be with the new board, so some of you won't get to see it, but just to know what's coming. And continuing initiatives with healthy food and wellness. We have contracts with six bargaining units, and we're also going to be continuing to look at the operational audit for any improvements we could make that were in there that we may be able to put into play. So, a lot on our plate this year, a lot of moving the district forward, so I'm excited about all of that, all the initiatives we have going, and you'll be hearing more about it as we go along, those of you that are along for the full ride this year. Some of you are probably sitting back saying, okay, glad I'm not here for it all. So I think that's, and that was a long-winded opening of school, but it's my one and only chance. My next item has to do with the Capitol project, so if I can just slide into that.
Absolutely.
I know I'm over time.
That's all right.
Already on this, I'm sorry. I try not to be the cause of meetings going long, but too much juicy stuff here. All right, so I just thought, as a point of information, and because it's so confusing to just outline for everybody where we stand with all these capital improvement projects, after all, you as a board approved a slew of capital improvement projects, not the big ones like Riverfield and Sherman, but the smaller ones, in the budget process. And as you know, some of them were enacted, I mean, the, you know, we're working on getting them done on the playground at the ECC and so forth. So the first two pages is just a recap of what actually got funded and where things stand. So, the Dwight Boilers, there's nothing to be done there, the Holland Oil Tank is being done, we did half the Jennings bathrooms, we'll have to come back for the rest of those, so, and so forth. So that's the overview, the board actually, and we added the switches in there, remember how that was added in by the boards later on? We didn't really request that. But the board asked for, if you take the switches out of the equation, the board requested about $1.7 million worth of capital projects. Remember, our allocation was supposedly $2 million? We actually got funding for about $400,000. That's the bottom line. Where are they all? So follow the bouncing ball on these other pages that I sent out on Monday, and you could just see where things have gotten stuck. So, the roof repair project, that started a little bit later, that started on March 8th to do major roof repairs, warranty extension. We're now up for Board of Finance review October 4th. The Ludlow Window Project, that actually started before I came, is sitting at the T- The Ludlow Window Project, that actually started before I came, is sitting at the TFC, waiting for a cost estimate to come out of the study that they did. So you can see what's happened with that one. The Ward Roof, the Ward Roof is leaking, has been leaking for a while. The board actually, again, approved this project right before I came, went over to the TFC. Board of Selectmen sent the project to TFC on November 17th. TFC hired an architect on March 24th. Finally got the report. We're waiting. Still waiting. Sherman is in good shape. I think we're, that's one pretty set. McKinley Roof Repair, you approved this January 12th as part of the budget. Follow the bouncing ball. $30,000 was approved by the RTM to have another study. They hired Hoffman. Two months later, got a report. Two months after that, so we're sitting nowhere on that. Need to get it out of the TFC so we can get on for a funding request. I should just point out that the report that we sent you, the report from Hoffman, basically said the same thing that our consultant said was the problem, Tecta. So spent $30,000 to learn that. Riverfield, you can see we've just got launched, and the Tomlinson facade is the saddest tale of all, because it started, it went through several rounds. The more bullet points you see on here, the worse the news tends to be. At the end of the day, it was voted down. So we have the same situation at Tomlinson that we had months ago, and that's where it all stands right now. So that's just sort of a recap in a, tried to make it as factual as possible. I made Tom go back and look up all those meeting minutes and dates, and he was ready to kill me.
Mrs. Brand, you have a question?
Because he had to live it. So that's where we are. We've got a capital planning summit coming up next Tuesday, and I think that if the town wants to look at a process for how we're doing it, this is the evidence of how the process worked this year. Draw your own conclusions.
Go ahead, Mrs. Brand.
Actually, speaking to that is what I was going to ask, if the board would consider authorizing Dr. Title when they are doing the discussion. The iteration that we have come to expect is with TFC, a lot of expertise, wonderful guys and ladies, but volunteers. So their schedule has been prohibitive, and what we have found, it has become a practice that is actually, I think, caused, as this document shows, more issues and problems than actually facilitate and doesn't really serve the interests of the school district or, quite frankly, the town. So if the board members are comfortable, I would strongly urge us to then direct Dr. Title to address that at this meeting so that we can see if we can come up with something different than this, because this isn't working. It just isn't working.
Mr. Carey, then, Mrs. Iacono.
Through the chair to administration, we had mentioned McKinley having to have some patchwork now because this has been delayed for, and we have active leaking breaches in a building that we spent $24 million to replace because of mold and leaks. Can you tell us how much the repair is going to cost us to hold this over until the town bodies determine what they're going to do in terms of the final fix?
I don't have a number off the top of my head.
Does Mr. Cullen know that?
Do you know what the status is and potential cost of the patch on the McKinley roof is?
We don't have that cost in yet.
Okay.
Do we have, you know, five figures, four figures? Okay.
$300,000.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for. And originally, our preventive maintenance team, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, estimated $100,000 to repair that roof. And $30,000 was, and following the bouncing ball of what you gave us, Dr. Title, $30,000 was expended to get an estimate for what it would cost to repair the roof. And is the number still $100,000?
No.
No, it went up a lot.
$330,000.
It's now $330,000 to fix McKinley.
Right.
So how much did we give Hoffman Architects as a town?
Thirty.
To tell us that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Just for the superintendent's information, the windows at Roger Ludlow High School have been a point of discussion in this town since 2001. So.
We're getting there.
So we're almost there.
Right.
I do agree, Mrs. Brand, the, we have great volunteers in our town who are doing their best to help us, but I think that we've overwhelmed them with what we're looking to do. And we do have to, as a body, discuss a different approach, and it's not just this body. I think we're fairly efficient in analyzing the problems and moving them forward. I think in this community, we've got hung up on not identifying the problem, but trying to identify the price at this level, which really isn't something that is a commitment that we have to fulfill as opposed to identifying the problem. However, it's something we obviously want to do, is the first question anyone's going to ask is, what's it going to cost to fix that? We need to look at a different way to do this, though. And one of the things that had been suggested last year, as we started to collect more information, get better enrollment projections, which looks like we're moving in the right direction there in terms of building-by-building projections at least, was to potentially have a look at all our buildings. With the idea of wrapping the plan up as a package as opposed to doing these one at a time, I think part of the problem with our process is because we have representative government in this town, and there's so many bodies have to see and touch these projects, that by parting them out one at a time, and, you know, this is something that Dr. Title identified, I'm not going to take this as my own idea, but by parting these projects out one at a time, we just create this long, never-ending cycle. You know, Mr. Fattabey made a good point before. We don't want to appear to be disrespectful to their bodies, but the frustration starts to mount. I've been to two Sherman RTM meetings to stand in the auditorium with Mr. Cullen over the last three years for the same project that we're talking about right now, and the price keeps escalating every year that goes by to the taxpayers of this town. So I hope that we can potentially find a way to engage with other town bodies, you know, we know there's a election coming up. But once that's been settled, we really need to find a better process to streamline this for both the taxpayers and the district.
Mrs. Iacono.
Thank you. I do agree that we do need to discuss at the Capitol Project Summit, but the more immediate issue with what we have that's already out of the gate, so to say, is that these things are stuck. And I don't think that that's necessarily, that's only a piece of what this summit will be. So to that end, I would like to suggest that this body ask the chairman of the Board of Education and the superintendent to immediately get a meeting with the First Selectman, who is very big on process, has been touting process and looking to move things along throughout the district, and ask him what he can do to basically get these projects out of committee, because they, it's ridiculous. I'm sorry. It's too long in the making. Unfortunately, this is bureaucracy at its worst, and it's costing us money as we hold this stuff off. So I would like to formally ask the First Selectman to take action to move this out of the committee. These projects deserve an up or down vote so that we can move on with what we're doing with our district. And I hope the board would support this request.
How about tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM?
That is beautiful. You read my mind. You read my mind, and I know the First Selectman and the Board of Selectmen have been very accommodating in terms of moving projects along throughout the town with different things, whether it's Metro Center or the Gold Manor Park, Sherman. I know they've been amenable to special meetings, so if we need to request that of them, then I think we should move forward with that as well.
Thank you. I can, just, actually, John mentioned, I do have a meeting with the First Selectman, coincidentally, tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. So if the chairman would like to join me, we can double team him. Although I don't believe he's the holdup. I think he's just a, he's a.
No, and I don't mean to imply that. I'm asking for his assistance in helping to move the process along. I know he's very process-oriented, and whatever he can do to get it out of committee and into their lap so that they can make a decision, so these things can move forward throughout the whole process, that would be fantastic.
Because I'm just looking at these, none of these have a price tag that would warrant them to be supervised by a building committee. So we don't have that added piece. So we actually could do it, as long as they don't have any outstanding contracts, the TFC, that might be the only other holdup. But other than that, there shouldn't be any, and we could actually bring it, have them go back to the Board of Selectmen and move along. So I would like to see that as well.
Anybody else on this?
All right.
Anything else, Dr. Title, on this?
I got the next item, too.
Oh, Mr. Fattabey, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I, in general, tend to agree. I think it's important to bring these to the First Selectman's attention again, try and have him facilitate it moving through the town bodies. But I think to a large extent, we don't have control over the process, per se, and I'm not sure we can suggest a change in the process necessarily, because we don't have any real control over the process. We can try and advocate changes for the process and advocate moving it along forward, and I agree with that. And it is sort of disconcerting that it's somewhat out of our control, but I think one also has to understand the political environment and the realisticness of getting approvals. I'd also be a little cautious in forcing an up-and-down vote too quickly, because you may not like the result. So I think that, I think we should facilitate it, try and move it along, keep it alive, and get funding if we can, but pushing too hard may result in a result that is not pleasant.
Anybody else? All right, we are on, I believe, item number six, old business discussion and approval of understanding on health insurance. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the understanding on health insurance. That's enclosure number three. Can I have a motion? Mr. Carey seconded by Mrs. Albin, and I'll start with Dr. Title, and then we can talk about this. Go ahead, Dr. Title.
Yeah, we had a pretty extensive discussion on it at the last meeting, but just to recap, for those of you that were on vacation, last year during the budget process, the big consternation was how we were budgeting for health insurance, the memorandum of understanding that was signed between Ann Clark and Ken Flato, the funding of the reserve fund, how much we needed to keep in there, and so on and so forth. And one of the things I pledged to do as we got to the end was to work with the town to come up with a process that everybody could live with. So when we get to this budget, everybody understands the parameters, it's fiscally sane for everybody involved, and we would essentially replace the prior memorandum with a new set of understandings. And last time I gave you a draft, you made some suggestions collectively, individually, about some items that should be in the draft. I also had it reviewed by Don Houston to make sure that we were legally actually swapping for one memorandum for the other. So there's some legal stuff in there that I did not write. And he also made some suggestions to protect the board's interest in here with respect to not waiving any rights about line item budgeting and so on and so forth. So the result is in front of you. I did run the revised memorandum past Mr. Hiller, Mr. Tetrow, and Mr. Flynn, who I've been working with on that. You know, they couldn't speak for their boards. They're not even sure their boards have to approve it, but they were very comfortable with this, and so I would like to move this forward.
Okay. Any board members have any questions, discussion? Mr. Fattabey, and I see him making a move with the hand. Go ahead.
I agree with the substance of this understanding document, as well as the most important effect is to make null and void and rescind that prior agreement. However, as a document, I guess it's my view that it's somewhat, it's not as clear as I would like be, as a document goes, in the sense that what got us in trouble a little bit in the past was the document itself previously was written not all that well, or it was not understood to some degree. So I think there's a few things in this document that are somewhat ambiguous and conflicting, in my opinion, somewhat indefinite. So I would obviously like to see a tighter document that's a little clearer. And in addition, my view of this document is not really an agreement, per se, or a contract. It's more of a understanding, because there's no real obligations. They're definitive. There are goals which are somewhat subjective, or not really subjective, but goals which are not necessarily mandatory. So I even wonder whether you have the need for actual agreement, per se, because I don't think this is an agreement, and maybe just some sort of letter of understanding that is really not necessarily binding, because I'm not sure this actually is binding the way it's written. That, in combination, make it a little tighter. There's a few things that I guess I can maybe discuss later that is confusing to me as an agreement. But those are my comments, and I would like to see it a little tighter than if we're going to actually sign off on this and have it as a, an agreement we may be bound to, depending on the interpretation.
Mrs. Albin?
I share some similar concerns to Mr. Fattabey. I do believe in the first paragraph that we, I do believe we need to rescind the old agreement. And the language that follows, my first question before Dr. Title had mentioned was, had this been reviewed by council? I think, has it been reviewed and does it have the endorsement of our council as this being a document that we should really enter into? Under the statutes, we don't have to enter into this document. And we, I mean, under the general statutes, once the town gives the Board of Education its funding, it's the Board of Education that manages that funding and that budget. And I would ask for the advice of council if, yes, it does say in the, on the second page, regard to waiver, you know, limit or compromise the board's statutory rights, but prior to that, have, has it been requested from town bodies that we enter into such an agreement? There was a lot of discussion about the prior memo of understanding during the budget process. And, given that neither of those people are employed or elected in the town of Fairfield anymore, or at the, almost at the time that discussion was taking place, I questioned at that point in time if that document had any standing then. So I share Mr. Fattabey's concerns. I'm not certain that we need anything more than rescinding the prior document, and I think we might want to just contemplate that as a board. And I don't say that out of disrespect to any of our town bodies, but have we been asked for this? That's what I would want to know.
Well, you asked a couple of questions there. One was, was it reviewed by Don Houston? Yes. I think I made that clear. We had a discussion about, you know, why do you need this at all, kind of a thing, right? And we talked about these concerns, and that's why he wrote some of the language in that he did. The problem that we have is simply voiding the other document, and I have a copy of it here somewhere, has an escape hatch in it, okay? But the escape hatch says, "All the money," and it goes back to the town. So you want to have that fight about just voiding that other contract or that other agreement, and whether it's legally binding or not, I mean, that's a mess waiting to happen. And this is a good faith effort on the part of the board to assist the town in meeting its obligations. And I don't believe there's a requirement that the board get into this at all. I think this is a, trying to clear up what was very messy, and that if we don't have something like this, and we don't have anything, and we go to budget for health insurance next year, and I say, you know, we don't have to budget the full amount that Aon suggests because we have such a big balance, we can take it down by a million dollars. And then it'll be, wait a minute, you're rating the fund, you're jeopardizing the AAA bond rating, because there's no standard set for what the balance should be. What this document does is say, as long as we fund to twice the IBNR, as far as the town's concerned, as far as everybody's concerned, we've met our obligations. And if we're over that, we can reduce to that number. It sets a bar for us. So I don't think anybody asked me for this. me for this from the town side. I think we got into a discussion of how can we solve the problem, and this has been the result of those discussions. I'm concerned that if we do nothing, all we've done is put us in a position next year of exactly where this year, where nobody's agreed on, on what the right number is, and then we're just setting ourselves up to get crucified again. Me in particular.
And whoever sits next to you.
Right. So I'm, I, believe me, I'm not, I get this. There's certainly, the board gets to control its own budget, right? We made that very clear all along. That's the correct legal stance. And maybe there's a way to tighten it up, the way Mr. Fattabean suggested, that if the other town bodies want to go along with that, that the body agrees with this in principle, and if we work out the legal details, then we can go along with it. But I'm worried about the outcome of doing nothing. That's my fear with this whole thing, and why I was trying to be proactive in getting this set up ahead of time. So that's my reaction to it.
I see Mr. Carey, then Mrs. Iacono, then Mrs. Brand.
So, the last two years, I think I've learned about self-insurance, that, God forbid, my company gets big enough, we can certainly do it ourselves. I'm going to fully support this this evening. I think this is an excellent agreement. Where we've come from with this is, and we're going, I think, is, is one of the key things we have to look at. And I'm not 100% sure, but, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm fairly certain we have to have some type of agreement in place to build, coalesce our monies with the town and the Board of Ed. And so if we look at the big picture reason why this fund exists in the first place, as citizens of Fairfield, there is self-insurance for our town employees, there's self-insurance for the Board of Ed employees. For the bond rating agencies that allow us to build wonderful buildings and train stations at extremely low interest rates, we need to be able to show them this combined reserve. And it really does protect the interests of our employees, as well as the town employees, in case either one of these groups gets a bad run in terms of health. So, you know, being self-insured is very risky, and the risk you take is if a large number of your employees get ill, or a small number of your employees get catastrophically ill, we have a big exposure. So by cobbling our funds together, we mitigate this exposure. That was the whole point of this. It kind of went down a different path, I think, over the last few years, unfortunately, and we ended up in a situation where we had too much of a surplus, and the town to this day does not have their side covered. So I recall, through the budget process, this board directing superintendent to fix this. And we have an agreement right now where the First Selectmen can move funds without, without, basically by picking up the phone and calling the superintendent and saying, I'm moving funds. And some of those funds are contributed by our bargaining units here in town, our teachers, our administrators. So I'm not really comfortable with that as a board member. Secondly, and Dr. Title just correctly pointed this out, if we just say we're ending this agreement now, all the surplus that's in that, which is sizable, goes away, goes back to the town. I don't think that's a very good outcome for us from a budgetary perspective. So I think in terms of flexibility and some of the other things that we asked for, this is a good agreement. I'll leave it to Mr. Fattabean and Mr. Matola to grade our attorney's work as the legal legals on the, on the board. But in terms of an MOU and understanding, I see that since the last time we saw this, one of the things that was requested was added in, that the town has some obligation by a date certain, which I know is one of the things that I asked for last time, to get their side up to snuff. And I think that helps all of us, not just the Board of Ed, it helps the town, it helps the taxpayers. So I think this, this is a very good outcome. I would encourage my fellow board members to support this document, to eliminate this part of the discussion during the budget season, to have everyone understand where we're going to be, to protect the interests of our employees in the district, as well as the taxpayers and the citizens of the town.
I think Mrs. Iacono's up next, then Mrs. Brand.
I agree wholeheartedly, for the simple reason that I was sitting next to Dr. Title when we got skewered by the Board of Finance about not having a clear-cut number. I think this will take away, contention's not the right word, but this, this will help one element of the budget process move, move more smoothly, and I think that we do need to have it, because these funds are shared by both the education side and the town side. And if you remember, there was a lot of talk about the Board of Ed not being an island and all of that. This helps us not be an island, and I'm perfectly happy with the changes that were made. I'm interested in hearing Mr. Fattabean's thoughts on tightening it up. I apologize, I'm coming down with a cold. But full support, and think we absolutely need to do something. And, and this is really what we asked of the superintendent, so thank you.
Mrs. Brand?
I can tell you what I do know and think I understand, and I mean think, because I'm not an attorney. What I think is, is that our town find, found themselves in a financial predicament, and that their triple-A bond rating is at risk, that their medical retention fund, their site is underfunded. We also have an agreement, which all of us saw, and quite frankly, in my opinion, it's not an agreement at all, because it didn't do anything for this body or the school district. In fact, it put it at risk. We asked to have it fixed. To me, the fix meant, quite honestly, let's just get rid of it, because I agree with Mrs. Albin, I don't think we need to have one at all. My concern is here, if I understand how this is funded, the way we fund this is we put monies from our operating budget into this, and our employees contribute on a percentage basis. So what we're doing is helping out the town, but we're subsidizing what the town didn't do. Let's be really clear here, and what I have a concern is, is that it's our employees that are doing this, as well as our kids. Because when we go to the town and ask for that money, they're not going to remember that part of what we're doing is funding this account. I had comments earlier when we first saw this at the table, and, and I will thank Dr. Title, because you actually did every single thing I asked. I just kept looking at this, and what I don't know, and I don't fully appreciate, is what, I don't think I know and appreciate and understand this document and the ramifications of voting for it. I'm not sure I fully understand what the fallout will be. I do not think that this agreement that we have still is any great guarantee, because we're carrying all the risk. And I don't even know with our operating budget as it is, if that's our job. It's not. It isn't that I don't want to play fair, it isn't that I'm not in the spirit of trying to help our town. I just don't know if this is the way to do this. I'd rather see if we're going to approach it this way, go to the town and say, okay, we're going to reduce our request to you for what we need for the next year, because we funded this well, and make adjustments accordingly. But otherwise, we're asking everyone that's in our employ, we're asking us to pitch in and take away from kids to fund what the town didn't do. And I appreciate the bond rating circumstance, but I don't think this is the way to fix this. So I will not be supporting this, and it isn't something, I, I just don't think this, this doesn't feel right to me.
Mrs. Albin?
Can I address a couple of things in there? One is that, under the current system, the surplus continues to build kind of indefinitely, right? And any attempt to lower the contributions to keep that surplus from building up, which does have board funds and employee funds in it, is met with skepticism, and what are you doing, and you're risking, and so on and so forth. The only way to be able to bring that number down is to have an agreement about what that number should be. I will tell you right now that our experience was very good in the 10-11 fiscal year, to the point where we will not need to put in additional money into this fund to meet this obligation of twice the IBNR, okay? In fact, this will, again, we have three months of claims to go here, but based on what's happened so far, this will actually allow us to reduce our contribution to this account, and plow that money back into direct services for what we're really here for. So I worry that absent a figure, a set figure that everyone agrees to, there'll be no, you know, just be a debate about what, whether we're funding appropriately or not. So the way it's constituted, it could look like, oh my God, we're going to have to go all the way up to twice the IBNR, we're putting in more money than we should, we're already over twice the IBNR. All right? So this is a way to get us to, I think Chairman Flynn said, to stair-step down, not take the elevator down, while they were taking the stairs up. And this, the implication of this, in terms of our operating budget for next year, is favorable, favorable, in terms of what we're going to need to put in our budget for health insurance, under the current claim pattern that we've seen. We had a very good year. All that 1.9 million that we were stealing from the fund, or whatever people said, it's all back, plus more. Okay? So that's, I mean, I just want to make that point, that this is not, I think it's going to help us in that, in that, in that regard, if that makes people feel any better.
If it's somewhat of a crapshoot during the budget season next year, if we don't have some type of an understanding. The Board of Finance can say, we want you to put X in there, and because they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing on their side of the ledger, so.
Right. There is a risk in, I agree with, you get too big a surplus in this thing, then employees can rightfully say, wait a minute, you're collecting 15%, 17% from us, it's just sitting over here in the surplus. On the other hand, you don't want to take it down too low, because then you risk not being able to pay your claims. So the question is, what's the right balance there, where you can say, you know, look, you know, we're, we're going to have a slightly larger balance in there, and that's a fair thing to have, but we're going to cap this thing, so we're not going to keep taking more of your contributions just to build up this surplus, because the town isn't doing it. That's the balance we're trying to strike with this thing. And with the understanding, by the way, that twice the IBNR is not the end of the game here. This is a temporary spot that we've landed in, and that the goal is to ratchet that thing down as the town ratchets its up. That's sort of the good faith part of this. So, if that helps any.
I saw Mrs. Albin, then Mr. Carey.
I've read this document a number of times, as we've sat here over and over again, and I'm pleased to see that the first paragraph rescinds the old agreement that I had issues with. And, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not certain why we need the agreement, but I've been listening to the discussion here at the table, and if this is an effort in good faith that sends that right message to the other bodies in town, if it makes things better for the superintendent during the budget process, I will support this, as long as I know that our council has reviewed it and looked after our interest in reading it. It is an understanding letter, it's not a contract. Question is, it's probably in a court of law, not even enforceable, except that we would want to follow it, because it could be taken out us, out on us at budget season, if we don't follow it. And I will support it to move it forward. I will predict that when the names and the faces on the various bodies that do the town's business change, this letter will need to change in the future. Nothing stays constant for very long in this community. So it's a letter that you, we will approve perhaps tonight, and somewhere I'll be hearing in the chatter around town, whether it's next year or the year after, that this item is up for consideration again. I'll predict that.
Mr. Carey?
Through the chair, to Mrs. Brand, as I, I hear some concern and trepidation on the issue. Specifically to your concern, is, is there something, well, is there something specific in the document, I guess, that, that is a concern? I want to try to help you get there, I guess, if there's something that's confusing. I was, I, I heard trepidation, but I don't know if there's.
John?
I know Dr. Seidel said we're not going to have to put more in, we're actually starting to take less of our surplus is, if that was part of it, but.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make, yeah, okay. Two things. One, I'm not an attorney, and unfortunately, if I had thought of it, I would have said, you know, I would have liked Don Houston here, so that we could ask him the questions. But, you know, hindsight's perfect. That's one thing, so I'm not totally at ease with this. And part of the reason is, is I don't know enough to know what I should be asking. That's one. The second thing is, and I have to rely on my gut, my guts, it's just not feeling right to me. And part of that is what the things that I did know. We had a bad agreement, and because we had a bad agreement, we're trying to Band-Aid it, quite frankly, with one that I still don't think is, is really serves the interests of this body, or the town. Town has a problem. And make no mistake, we don't need this agreement, because Aon tells us, and has been telling us, to fund it at a pretty high rate anyway. And if we're fortunate enough to have a good experience, I don't think we're going to be jeopardizing anything. We're going to be fine. We're going to be in the exact same place that we are. I do think, though, to Mrs. Albin's point, this, the former agreement was, did the whole school district a disservice. That just should go away. And I think any reasonable person, including the First Selectmen sees that, should appreciate that. So I wouldn't want to think that, you know, we're, we're being held hostage here, because we have a bad agreement, so that we have to do this one. I, I really don't think that's the case, but I also do believe that we're assuming the financial burden. And the other piece of this is, we're responsible for the school district. Our funding goes for this, and our employees. I don't even know, to be frank with you, if it's legal, or if it's right to assume the responsibility for the other. We take on their risk for medical, and because the town side wasn't, I think we've, you've mentioned this before in the past, didn't fund their side. We were really carrying their risk, their medical risk. We were. Because if they had a problem, we were, our side was paying for it. And, and that's part of the deal, but they weren't meeting their obligations. What I do see happening here, though, is something a little bit different. We're promising to keep a certain amount of funding in that bank account to cover the triple-A bond rating. And though I want to do that, here's my concern. Suppose we do have something that happens, and we do have a lot of claims, and we have to pay out, then we have a problem, because we've agreed to fund this. So we've agreed to keep a certain balance in here. We have. And I'm not comfortable with it. And again, as I said to you before, sometimes you just don't know the things you think you should be asking, because I just don't feel I have commanded this well enough. So I'm not comfortable in supporting it.
Okay. And then, through the chair, again, to Mrs. Brand. So your alternative would be to, to have the other document ended, but not?
Correct. Absolutely.
So to that, and I understand the trepidation, I, I really do, because this is a complex issue. In terms of making another document null and void, I, I agree to a certain degree about the validity of the document, but here's the practical reality, right? If we have this document, and we just say, oh, we're not going to follow it anymore, we might end up in a legal fight with the town, which is going to cost us attorney fees, maybe court fees, to try to break this document. What's going to happen, in my opinion, at that point, is the rating agencies that are already circling this town and giving us negative outlooks are going to say, okay, well, they don't have a, a, a single fund for medical retention anymore, so we're going to notch it down one. And the $36 million worth of projects that we have are going to be at a, that we're basically asking for, are going to be going at a bonded rate that's much higher than where we are right now, as a, as a double A+, or AA, or, or B, or wherever we end up. So one of the things that we have to be cognizant of here is that superintendent, and the First Selectmen, and the Chair of the Board of Finance have worked together. Our attorney has reviewed this document. I'm very impressed with the First Selectmen in terms of how quickly he's worked on doing this with us. This is very favorable to us, in my, my opinion, and to our district and our employees. To your point, we're following the consultants, we have a risk pool here. One of the things that we should feel good about with an agreement like this is that if we do if we do have a bad run, we have a problem, having this joint pool allows us to share funds back and forth with the agreement of the board and the agreement of the first selectman. So that kind of gives us that backstop.
We already have, this is, already is a joint, anyway.
It, it is today, but.
It doesn't have to be, though.
No, but it always has been. That was actually an agreement that was already done as soon as they did, this was a long time ago, as soon as they did self-insurance, we pulled the risk in order to save funds. So this has actually been that way for some time. We don't need this to, to keep that in place.
Well, we need to have some type of agreement to, to pull the, to pull the funds. And so I, I guess, this, I think, is the best outcome we could have asked for. We've got, and, you know, to Mr. Fadabene's point earlier, we've had active involvement from other town bodies here, and I think a lot of people have bent in a lot of different directions to get us to where we are. And I, I really would not want to put the Superintendent in a position where he has to go back with his hat in his hand to these folks who've given a lot and say, sorry, this is something the board doesn't want to do. And I don't think that would be the right approach. I think that if there's different language, that our attorneys in the board would like to suggest, to tighten it up, things like that, I'm, I'm open to hearing that, but I don't think that changing this agreement after it's been basically set up the way we asked.
Yeah.
Would be the right way to go.
Mrs. Iacono?
I just, I think it's time to move this discussion along. We've, we've talked about this ad nauseam since it happened at the Board of Finance table, the documents here, I think we're ready to vote on it. And I just want to say, I find it ironic that some board members that were having a hissy fit that we quote-unquote put ourselves at risk with the AAA bond rating are now saying, who cares about the AAA bond rating? But I, I do think it's time to just vote on this.
And the, the bottom line is, if at some point this board has a problem or future boards, we can get out of it. There's a, there's a provision in this contract that says we can get out of it. So I'm going to support this as it is. Is there any other discussion by members? Yes, Mrs. Dow.
Before we start talking about a vote, I'd like to hear what Mr. Fadabene has to say about tightening it up and what his concerns are, because he might have some legitimate issues that we would need to turn back to Don Houston to have rewritten, to come back to us then at a later date. Not saying throw it off altogether, but I want to get his opinion.
I can give you an example or two, but I think in general, I, I, I agree with the things that have been said, and I understand sort of what, or I think I understand what the intent of everyone is with the agreement. My concern is, I'm not sure this agreement does that, from what I understand of the intent being. One, in this agreement, I'm sort of unclear as to whether or not it is still going to be a joint account or whether it's going to be a separate, independent account, because part of the agreement says that it's going to revert to the full custody control of the board. Now, if it's a joint agreement, we don't have full custody control, so I think that's somewhat inaccurate. It may or may not be that way. So I don't, whenever you have an agreement, if it's not necessarily, if the agreement says something the way it's not, you have to interpret it, and that interpretation is dangerous then because you don't know how it's going to be interpreted. It could go for you or against you. The other thing that is unclear to me is, is that we have evidently a, an indication that we're going to keep twice the IBNR balance in the account. And the understanding I have is that we currently have that in the account, and our claim experience is very good, so it's likely that balance is going to remain high. But yet, in another sentence, it says, in the year 2014, 2015, the town board, the town and the board mutually acknowledge the goal of each funding a balance of 125% of the balance. Now, come 2014, 2015, we may have a sufficient balance, we twice the IBNR, and we may not need to fund 125%. But you were saying we're going to fund 125%. So that's contradictory. I'm not sure how that's going to be interpreted. So there's, there's things in this agreement that I think are, are somewhat ambiguous, contradictory, and in an agreement, in my opinion, those are not desirable and often lead to trouble and interpretations that have to be made by someone other than the people that made the agreement. So that's my only problem with this as an agreement. I don't think it's a, an accurate and precisely drafted agreement as I would like to see it as far as what the, and I'm not even sure what the understanding of the parties are. And whenever you review an agreement and you can't determine what the understanding of the parties are, I don't think you have a good agreement. So those are my concerns. In substance, I think that we may want an agreement, it may be good for the board to have an agreement. The question is, what does that document look like, and does it actually reflect what everyone's understanding is? And is it consistent? And that's just critical reading of the document itself. And I apologize for reading it critically, but in essence, that's what I do typically. And in my experience, glossing over agreements and saying they're okay is fine until you have a problem. And then when you have a problem, it's read very critically by a large number of people. And unless it's tight and accurate and consistent, you're going to have unpredictable, unpredictable results. And that's a problem, in my opinion. So that's my comment.
Did you have something, Dr. Title?
Well, I can address one issue. 200, twice the IBNR is 200%. Okay? So what we're saying is that at the, at this moment in time, we're agreeing to fund at twice the IBNR, 200%, knowing that the town is not there. That over time, the goal is for us to actually reduce to 125% of the IBNR, and the town would get up to 125% IBNR, and that would sort of be the equilibrium level. So right now, let's say the town's at 50% of the IBNR, knowing they can't get there all in one year, given the finances, and they've been trying, I will give them credit for that. They have been making additional contributions to get themselves out of the hole they found themselves in, that essentially, we would hold at 200% and then basically, with the goal being, eventually, that 200 will get down to 125, which is even more favorable to us. That's the distinction. We're starting out at a little higher number than you might normally have in the reserve, which gives us more protection in the event that we have higher claims. The 200% in this agreement gives us more protection than 125%. But over time, we would wind that down to 125. So I just, that's the, that's the idea there. So if there's a better way to word that.
I would make a suggestion where you say twice the IBNR, those parts, put 200% parentheses, so it's clear. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Just, just so, and, because that goes nicely with the 125% that's in the third to last paragraph on the bottom. So I would make that change. Did you have anything else, Dr. Title? And I think Mr. Carey had his hand up.
I don't have, that's enough.
Dr. Title made the point I was going to make, that the conversation has continually been at the other town boards, that they're going to stair-step us down, so we don't have to carry such a big surplus to cover the town side, they're going to stair-step the town up. We haven't had a written agreement that that's actually going to happen until this landed in front of us tonight.
Okay. Any other discussion on this by board members?
Do you need an amendment to add, the 200%?
That's a friendly amendment, I think it's understood. Mr. Fadabene?
I understand what Dr. Title's saying, he thinks this agreement says, but in my opinion, it doesn't say that. It clearly says that the health insurance account for the 2012, 2013 and subsequent fiscal years will be funded in the following manner, maintain, and then so forth, maintain an estimated fund balance at the end of the preceding fiscal year of twice the IBNR balance. So that read to me, and my interpretation of that be that in 2012, 2013 year and subsequent fiscal years, I'm going to maintain that fund balance as twice the IBNR. So the intent to try and wind that down to less than twice the fund, twice the IBNR, which is 200%, that's, that, my interpretation, that doesn't say that. So that's the conflict with the next, with another sentence that says that in 2014, 2015, you're going to each fund it, each fund it, meaning the town and the board, the balance of 125% of IBNR. So my problem I have is, I understand what you wanted to say, my problem is, it doesn't say that. So that's my problem, where I say, it has to be a little tighter. You know, I agree in principle with the intent. My problem is the execution. That when this document is looked at six months, seven, seven months, eight months, a year later, they're going to look at the document and read it, and it's going to say one thing to them then, and it's going to say a different thing, what we intended it to say, and that intent is going to be lost through passage of time, and the only thing you're going to have is the document. So that's my concern. It's a document that I believe is somewhat conflicting, ambiguous, not clear, and a document that I personally would not recommend someone entering into in the form it's at. Now, I don't care what the agreement is, I don't know what the, you know, in principle, I agree, we should have an agreement possibly. It may be in the best interest of the board. But that the actual tangible written form of that agreement's got to be clear, and that's my only objection. So if we were to vote on this tonight, I would, I, on the agreement itself, I find it difficult to, to agree that the form of the agreement would be acceptable, in my opinion, in the best interest of the board to pass in this form. So I would have a tough time voting for that at this time. Other than if it was a vote in the principle of entering into an agreement that is then drafted in a different form, perhaps I could be agreeable to, to, that it is in the best interest of the board to have some agreement and, or the district with the town in view of the situation we're in, and it should be clear what, what is going on. So that's my only complaint, and I find, I still have a problem with it.
Dr. Title and other board members, I understand what Mr. Fadabene's saying. Is it, is it our, our intent for fiscal year 2014, 15 to have the fund balance at 125% or we're just not sure right now?
No, I think that's, that's a goal, because nobody really knows what's going to happen with experience ratings and budgets and so on and so forth. It's an effort to say, this is what we're trying to do. They had said to us last year, you know, we don't mind you taking it down a little bit, but you got to let us, give us a chance to catch up. And so, you know, just as they can't actually tell us what to budget, we can't tell them what to budget.
So is it a problem if, if on the one, two, third paragraph down, I guess it's the third paragraph that says that the Board of Education fund the health insurance account for the 2012, 2013, and then it says, and subsequent fiscal years in the following manner? Is it a problem to get rid of the language, and subsequent fiscal years? And you're thinking about the big picture here, and I'm thinking out loud also.
Kathy wanted to be recognized.
Yes, Mrs. Albin.
Could I offer an approach?
Sure.
We're trying to write a document at the table that we now want to vote on, and, and that's extremely frustrating for people who've already worked hard on the document. There are board members who have concerns. I think, if I've heard everyone at the table, nobody objects to the first paragraph, and I don't believe the board members object to an additional letter of understanding, given that it is good for relations with the rest of the town bodies. But we've had a lot of discussion on this item, and I believe our recording secretary has probably taken a lot of that down, or it's on the transcript already. So perhaps, meaning that the specifics that the board members are looking for in this document have been enumerated, we might not need to use any more clock time to go through the list, it is on the transcript. And could we perhaps send this to our attorney, have him write the document? And I think we would be able to come in and in five minutes, vote for it? I mean, I, I offer that as an approach, I don't know if board members want to do it, if they want to. Is, is there, and, and if we were to convey that to the first selectman and to the Chairman of the Board of Finance, that we, we are working on this, and it's just a little bit longer before we have this done.
Yeah, Mrs. Iacono.
I'm just wondering, in the effort to get this moving along, and I don't know the protocol in doing it, but can I, I don't know who moved and seconded it, but I, what I would like to do is put a motion on the table that we approve the writing of a memorandum of understanding and come back and then vote on the substance of the, of the, so amend the motion that's on the phone.
Why don't we, why don't we, exactly?
But I just want to make sure that we leave the table. I don't want to have, in other words, my goal here is, I don't want to have the discussion again on whether or not we need to write a memorandum of understanding. I think that, that's, it's understood that the board wants it, the majority of the board. I, I don't want to open that up to discuss that at the next meeting. I want this conversation about having the memorandum be done. The only thing we should be talking about at the next meeting is what is in the memorandum.
Can you help me with that?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman? We could have an amendment to the motion that would say something to the effect that we, the board authorizes the chairman and the superintendent to work with the district's attorney to develop a memo of understanding on health insurance. We can amend the motion that way. Again, we have the transcript that clearly documents everything that was said in this discussion, and our attorney could work from there.
If that's an amendment, I would second it.
I mean, I, it's, I haven't actually made a clear amendment for the secretary to document, but I'll waive until the secretary says something.
Yes, Mrs. Zahn.
Thank you. I, I propose that we wait until the next meeting, and then you vote it up, you vote it down. No amendments to this, that everybody knows it's going to be discussed anyway, you know, this board. You vote it up, you vote it down at the next meeting, if that's what you want to do.
I disagree. I just, we, it's 9:15, we've been on this for how many minutes? It's ridiculous.
About an hour.
Well, that's insane, and I think that we need to get to a point where we've reached a consensus, we know we want the memorandum of understanding. I don't think we should be wasting people's time having that discussion again before we get to the substance of the document, which is really where we are, we're on the substance of the document. Mrs. Albin, I wish you would put forth the amendment, because I would second it, and then we could have discussion and healthy debate and a vote on that, and then we could move things along.
Are you going to make that amendment, Mrs. Albin?
If it helps. I will make an amendment to the motion that the board instruct the chairman and the superintendent to work with our general counsel to develop a letter of understanding on health insurance to be voted on at our next regular meeting. Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Fadabene?
Real quickly, I think that, I, I think that, I'll pass. I just want to know that, that's already happened. So what's new?
Here's the problem.
Okay? You asked me to get together with the attorney and draft it. I got together with the attorney, we drafted it. Now you're telling me to go back to the attorney and draft it again. So I think maybe we should have Mr. Fadabene and maybe Mr. Matola, maybe you guys can all lawyer up on this thing and come back with it, because we already tried this. Now, we're going to send this, the boards, we're going to talk about it, I'm not sure what they're going to do with it, like Selectmen and Finance, I'm not sure if they're going to vote on it or not. But what you've described in the motion has already occurred. So maybe we ought to do something different so we can get agreement on this, because we had an hour discussion on it at the last meeting. Now we've had another hour discussion about it, so I need clear direction about what exactly you want changed in this, so when it comes back, we can get it approved.
Here's what I want changed in it, because I think it's, and it's, I should have picked this up earlier.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
Would you like me to withdraw the amendment so that you can discuss the document?
Sure.
I withdraw the amendment.
And I have no problem with that.
The, the issue is the third paragraph that says the Board of Education fund the health insurance account for the 2012, 2013 and subsequent fiscal years. I do think there is somewhat of a conflict with that language and the language in the second to last paragraph that says that the town and board mutually acknowledge the goal of each funding a balance of 125% of the IBNR no later than 2014, 2015 fiscal year. So that's, that's the, I see that as a, as a concern.
I just want to point out that the draft you saw last time did not have the thing about the goal of 125% in it.
Because we asked you to do it.
Board members wanted it in there.
That's right.
Now I put it in, now that's no good. I'm just pointing that out.
It's not that it's no good, it's, it's a problem. I understand.
I, I just need to know what the process is going to be, so that when we get the document back, people are satisfied with it. Don't mean to be flip about it, but I just need to know what, you know, that seriously, maybe, you know, you two guys and Don should sit down and hammer it out, it's fine with me.
Well, maybe we have to.
You know, that, they, okay, you guys can have, like, legal discussions about this stuff, and then come back and everybody will be fine.
Actually, that's.
Lawyers know how to screw things up, don't they?
Yeah, that's all right. That's what we paying for.
Actually, that's what I was, had my hand raised to suggest. It, it would, it bothers me to vote on it as is, because Mr. Fadabene, who is an attorney, has. It bothers me to vote on it as is, because Mr. Fattabeh, who is an attorney, has such questions with it. I mean, if he doesn't think that the language is tight enough, and that the execution of it in a, like he's saying, could be lost through time, and as an attorney, he wouldn't advise his clients to enter into this, that he has concerns, I think that language then does need to be tighter. So as Dr. Tidal says, well, he's already looked at it with Attorney Houston, well then, I don't want to give Mr. Fattabeh more work, but would he be willing to discuss with Dr. Tidal, and as we said, Mr. Matola, since you're an attorney as well, then with Dr. Houston and try to tighten up the language as, I mean, because this is the thing, we don't want to enter into it without knowing what we're really entering into it. You've had specific questions, specific concerns that, as Mrs. Albin said, are on the tape, but would you be willing just to talk through this so it can be tighter, so there aren't any problems?
I tell you what else, if the board wants me to, Mr. Fattabeh and myself will do maybe a conference call with Mr. Houston, and if the superintendent wants to be part of that, absolutely, to just put this thing to bed. I think we, most of us agree on the concept, which is very important. So I'm more than willing to do that.
Yeah, the concept's important, but then the language, because if it can be interpreted differently, that's what we have, I mean, that's what my concern is then, because then, yeah, who's going to interpret it, and what's, what would we be left holding? I mean, we don't want to be left, are going to be on the same page as we are, and not interpreting it differently.
Make sure the other parties' agreement are okay with the language changes that you might make.
Right, absolutely.
You've got to run it by first selectmen and other people, so.
Sure, okay. Mrs. Albin, yes.
There's, there is a motion on the floor, so you have to determine what to do with the motion. It either has to be withdrawn and/or tabled and sent to a quasi-subcommittee for review and re-presentation, but you do have a motion on the floor.
Why don't we just withdraw it?
Who moved it?
You withdraw the main motion, Mr. Carey, I believe.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And tabled for the next meeting. That's what we're going to do.
Would you like to make a motion to table at the next meeting? I'll make a motion to table at the next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, any discussion on tabling it?
No.
Any public comment on tabling the motion, tabling this to the next meeting? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone in favor, one abstention. Okay.
No, I voted in favor, I'm sorry. I said aye.
Let's all not get frustrated, we're almost there, and I understand the frustration, but you know what? I think Mr. Fattabeh made a good point there, so. All right, moving on. New business, first read of policy number 5330, bullying enclosure number four. Dr. Tidal.
I don't care who talks, speaks to this. Subcommittee reviewed this, and we're moving it forward for its first read. It is perhaps the most all-encompassing about bullying that you could ever find. The sequel to it will be the school climate piece, because bullying is really only a piece of school climate. I, you know, if you have any issues with the language or any questions, you know, I know Andrea and Mrs. Parks, Dr. Tidal, you know, I'll answer what I can, but it's, this has really been a long time coming. I know that Mrs. Zahn still had some reservations, and it may not be perfect, but it's, honestly, it's very thorough. We do not have regulations on this yet, but what will happen when we have the school climate piece written, that will really act as our regulations as well. So you won't see those there right now, but they will be, they'll be done by December and presented to the board then.
Mrs. Zahn.
Thank you. Yeah, it's first read, I want everybody to be aware of that, but when it comes back to us, the only thing that is in the policy is what the state requires of us. Fairfield thumbprint, it's working, but I don't know why, it's not coming through.
Suze?
Yeah. Thank you. It won't have Fairfield's thumbprints on it. There's nothing in this document that's unique to us, other than what the state mandates of us for bullying. You know, I've been wrestling with this issue for a long time. I don't even know what to put in it to make it, to make me satisfied, to make myself satisfied. So I do, you know, would love to hear input, you know, Mrs. Leonardi, Ms. Leonardi is going to have this committee, and we're going to get input, but until we get that input, I will not be able to vote for it.
Go ahead, Mrs. Brant.
There was one more thing about this. I know, as I said before, the school climate plan that will be incorporated, the Andrea Leonardi and Mrs. Parks said that curriculum does not belong in this specifically, but they will be incorporating the bullying issue in individual pieces as they come up before the board to include this. And updated, the health curriculum is also already addressing portions of this as we speak, so they're very current, but it will also have in the regs start to incorporate in where it's going to go into curriculum. It was something I felt that if we're going to be doing it, we, everyone has to be educated as to what that means.
Let me ask you a question, whoever wants to answer this. What template did you use to come up with this? In other words, is this just the State Board of Education giving you language? This is CAPE?
CAPE's.
It's CAPE's?
CAPE's recommended policy.
All right. So that's been vetted by CAPE?
Right.
Your lawyers have looked at it?
If I could just speak to one of the issues that I think will change.
Go ahead, come on up.
This is a departure from past policies that looked solely at bullying response. And if you remember back to our, okay, there you go, got me? If you remember back to our suicide policy discussions last year, the mirror image of that is this, it changes the policy. The longstanding policy about bullying for the districts has been only about response to bullying once it's occurred, or the accusation of bullying has been made. So it's only solely been a response policy. The departure that I, for one, am very excited about, and the potential here, is that it changes the conversation from what do we do when bullying occurs, to what do we do to prevent our schools from having a climate that supports bullying? And so it really is going to change, in my hope, the conversation from is it bullying or isn't it bullying, to what about our school climate will no longer support bullying from taking place at all? So it's going to change from that response only to prevention, intervention, and response, which you'll remember was the big change for our suicide, suicide policy. And I sincerely believe that it's the prevention and intervention sections of the, what you will see when we come back to you in December with our safe school climate plan that you will be voting on, and I, I am hopeful and optimistic that I'm going to get Ms. Zahn's vote. It is my primary goal. So, that I am going to change her mind, that we can take this from where it is currently, where she is uncomfortable, to a point where, as a community of adults in support of our students and our schools, that we can create a policy that really does improve school climate and make bullying not the conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Dow, do you have something?
Just through the chair then, thank you, because that's a wonderful thing, to be ahead of the game and to prevent it before it even happens. Like you said, we always seem to be on the reaction end, so to be ahead of the game and ahead of the curve sounds wonderful, so thank you.
Mr. Fattabeh.
This is my night for comments. This is certainly a change in policy, and a lot of this is dictated by state statutes, so some of it we don't have any control of, and I agree with many aspects of it. One issue that I have, or that, not really an issue, but a component that I don't think is necessarily addressed in this policy, this policy primarily relates to prevention and intervention, and the desire or the effort to, in essence, establish a safe school climate. So a lot of that is geared to in the school, making it safe for the children, preventing bullying, and intervening when there is bullying. In a sort of philosophical note, I guess, one of my beliefs is that as a district, sometimes we owe more to the students than just protecting them, but also teaching them to deal with the world outside. And one of my concerns is that while, even if our efforts are successful in making a safe school climate within the schools, and this policy is implemented beautifully, tremendously successful, all we did was prevent bullying taking place in schools. The realities of life are that there is bullying outside of school, and so as a component of this, I would like, or at least my belief would be, that to best serve the students, and to really accomplish a goal as a school district, one of the most beneficial things we can give to a student or teach a student is the ability to cope with the bullying situation, should it occur elsewhere, and to somehow instill in them the ability to deal with that and carry on with their lives despite these occurrences happening. So in my view, to be fully successful as a district, one would be able to graduate their students with not just protecting them while they're in the school, but give them tools from which they can protect themselves outside the school. So anyway, I don't see that as a component in here, but I'd like to see that somewhere, the ability to try and, in whatever we possibly could, have the students the ability to leave the doors of our institution in a better situation to deal with these situations. That's it.
Just commenting on that, one thing, if a student has that safe climate, like when you're, Mr. Fattabeh is saying, you know, give them the tools, if they're raised and, you know, all the way through our system, and they have that safe climate, and they've not been bullied, then they will have a greater self-esteem. And it's this, kids a lot of times who have lower self-esteem's that end up being bullied on. So I mean, that alone would just be a tool. They have a safe environment, and they feel good about themselves, and they have never been picked on, they will, they're not as likely to be picked on when they leave the school, because they're going to have that stronger self-feeling. So, I mean, you make a good point, but I, I mean, I see that as one step already in that direction, just by having the safe climate. I mean, that will be giving them tools, because you are promoting their self.
Anybody else on this?
If I could just, I think the section that Mr. Fattabeh speaks about is really spelled out and will be part of the intervention section, because intervention will occur not only with the student who may be the perpetrator of bullying, who may have those experiences, both on a change, teaching new skill sets, but will be teaching new skill sets to students who may have experienced or perceive to be in a position of having been bullied. So I think there is, that whole section of intervention will speak to not just protecting students, but building resiliency among our student body, so that we can address any issues where students may feel victimized, and how to seek support appropriately, and how to get that support and those coping mechanisms. So it is contemplated in the policy in that section of intervention.
Mrs. Brant, you have something? Okay. Anybody else on this? Yes, Mrs. Zahn.
Very quickly, I, can I have your mic? Very quickly, I just want to plant a seed in Board of Ed members' minds, because this is not the night for philosophical discussions, but I told Mr. Fattabeh at the, at the subcommittee meeting, I agree with him 100%. Now, just quickly, let's take this one step further with the words that he used, the realities of life and so on, teaching our children, and I just go back to our policies on, for instance, healthy food. So there is where my philosophical discussion would begin with, how come it's okay to teach children how to cope with bullying, but not allow them to pick their choices of food in the cafeteria for themselves? So that's just an example. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, next item. We are on item number eight, public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes, and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advance authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member of the board. Decorum will be enforced. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Have any public comment tonight? Come forward, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Kelly Crisp. I guess I give my address.
Sure.
324 Harbor Road, Southport. I moved here three years ago, and I came tonight to address the enormous disparity in the instructional hours, but I'm going to leave that alone for tonight, because the bullying issue came up. And my background is a former prosecutor, sex crimes. I served as juvenile court prosecutor. I've written legislation on child endangerment and a number of other child-related issues. I've done programming and bullying statewide. So I look at this, and I've just had an opportunity to read it like a cursory review, but I do see that there is definitely room for improvement. The thing that sticks out to me is that they don't, you don't really have in the examples of bullying, anything that really, that really speaks to sexual harassment. And when you talk about a code of conduct, just as you talk about a law, there's prevention, there's intervention, and there's prosecution. And so when I see the examples, and I believe the examples will be enumerated at some point, based on the rollout that I've seen, a victim is not going to see themselves in this language, in these examples. A victim of sexual harassment is not going to see themselves, period. Someone who is, who may want to perpetrate sexual harassment won't see that conduct as something that's, that's a part of the bullying code that you have. And I've come from a school district that had a very active code of conduct with respect to bullying for at least five years. So I do see that as a huge problem, and I would ask that it would be added, or at least taken up, as a point of, as a, some sort of formal request, but as a point of conduct, that the sexual harassment has to be included. Otherwise, you have girls whose reputations damaged as a result of rumors that are spread that go directly to sexual conduct, it's not enumerated in here, and it really doesn't, it doesn't speak to the vague language that's included. And I also see the term "put downs." That's not a term that's definable.
Your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you. But you can send emails to us if you want to, if you want to add some more.
Disparaging comments or remarks would be better than put downs.
Thank you.
Suzanne Mesko, 123 Roy Gate Road. Dr. Tidal, I, listening to your opening remarks, unfortunately, I know I can't address you all specifically. The redistricting plan that put 20 buses in the loop at Roger Little Middle School, Roger Little Middle School bus loop, looks like the Port Authority in Manhattan at rush hour. My son is on a bus where the next thing you guys need to do is put strapping hands so that they can all hold on, because we are at capacity, three or four to a seat, and we have not made school on time yet. I'm hoping that maybe tomorrow will be a better day. We also, because we have 20 buses in the bus loop, and I went to see myself, you can only fit 10 in a line, which means at 2:50, if your bus is not one of the first buses in that line, you are now waiting until the first 10 takeoff, which means my son is boarding a bus at approximately 3:10 in the afternoon. He is not returning to Roy Gate Road, which is not very far from Roger Little Middle School, until about 3:30. The bus that he is on is one of those buses looping towards the McKinley side of town. I will tell you, the bus 84 and 89, which I watched arrive as the last two buses yesterday, are both looping from the other side of town. I think looping is a wonderful idea. Unfortunately, I don't know about you, but this town in September is like a parking lot between 2:00 and 5:00. So those buses coming back are meeting a lot of resistance to be back in that loop. That said, going to open house at the middle school, I know we had budget problems, but I also remember while we were discussing the redistricting plan that got passed, was also the discussion of an AP history or social studies book for the high school. I applaud that, I think that's great. But I go to middle school and a tech ed class to find out that we can't learn- But I go to middle school and a tech ed class to find out that we can't learn how to build anything with wood, because there is no budget for wood this year at the middle school. Academics has to have both sides. These kids need the academics and the practical learning experience.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Any open board comment tonight?
Yeah. Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Fattabey, you want to go first?
I guess if you want.
Sure.
It's my night tonight, I guess. I'm going to make up for all my lost meetings. Just a, just a comment, I was, last week, or two weeks ago, I guess, there was a good article in New York Times about technology, and how technology improves or doesn't improve education. And it was very interesting, I encourage the board members to try and seek that policy out. I may try and make a copy and pass it around, but it was basically a study or analysis of, of a district that was very, that had very good funding for technology, and whether it not, or whether it did or did not actually increase student achievement, and there was discussion as, on both sides of the opinions of experts as to whether it does or doesn't. So I think it was just a good thing to, to read and be aware of, and then you can make decisions based on all your knowledge. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Brand.
We read the same newspaper, I remember reading that, and I agree, and they have two also. One in particular that I loved, because it was the trouble with homework, and I can give this to Bev Dyer, and she can, you know, maybe scan it and give it to you folks, because it was, it was describing actually how children learn, and it was the most definitive description I have ever seen about how children learn, and it was, it was very well done. And another one was about bullying, and what happens when children with different family, types of families, and some of the things that they experience in schools. It also was worthwhile, particularly very timely, given what we're discussing now. So I'll give those to Bev, and she can then hopefully be better than I am getting these to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education convene into executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation. Mrs. Albin, seconded by Mrs. Iacono, all in favor? Means you all have to leave. Thank you.